And we're live. Good evening, everybody. I welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 5th, 2019. First order of business is approval of the minutes. I know that we had a few changes, but I'm prepared to vote as they are unless you have any further revisions. I think just one set tonight?
Yes, the October 29th, 2019. I move that we accept those minutes.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Public comment for items not on our agenda tonight. Seeing none, we will now move to the public hearing on the petition of Aquarian to install and maintain water mains on Ward Street. Mr. Olson, thanks for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have our letter of conditions with the Department of Public Works. If you could just take us through the project.
Sure. It's my understanding the developer would like to build three houses at the site of 90 Ward Street. It's my understanding as part of the permitting process that the Board of Health required them also to connect the house located at 100 Ward Street, which is currently on a well. That's due to the proximity to some septic systems. So the grant of location includes extending the main in two directions, approximately 135 feet to the west and 50 feet to the right. That is to connect the three proposed dwellings at 90 and the one proposed dwelling at 100. It's an extension of an eight-inch main, and there'll be valves at each end to extend it further in the future. So I know I presented a letter describing the -- a brief description project and a figure showing where it is, a sketch. And through the public process, we received a couple of inquiries. One from house number 87 expressed interest in connecting to the main, and another 104, which is further to the east, which would be a further extension of 200 feet. And they had since emailed me this evening to indicate that they're willing to wait until such time that it might get extended for another reason.
Okay. Okay. So this is at the request and expense of the developer?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And I'd just like to go on the record at this point. I live at Berkeley Circle, but I'm not a legal abutter to this project this evening. Any questions?
What is the timing on getting the work accomplished?
I believe the developer would like to get the water main in before the DPW closes the roads, so this month.
Okay. And how will traffic control issues be maintained?
He'll get a police detail, and they'll arrange traffic with the police detail, cones and stuff.
Okay.
And about how long do you think?
It should take construction in the roadway about a week, and then there'll be another week of testing. But the construction will be done, and it'll just be some testing, pressure testing and disinfection.
Am I correct that all abutters have been notified about this proposed project?
Yes, they have.
With respect to traffic, then, will there be any confinement of hours to account for the morning and evening commutes? Or I'm just worried that, you know, that's a pretty significant roadway for commuting, particularly in the morning, and there's also very significant school bus traffic because I am always caught behind one of them, so.
She's speaking out of personal assessment.
Exactly. I'm just trying to plan my route.
Well, I assume you're going to be coordinating with the police department.
We will be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So if there's any concerns by the police or any other town departments, they can let us know.
Okay. Great. Anything else, Joe?
No.
I don't have anything else to add either. I would take a motion.
Questions for the public?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we do. Questions from the public? Sure. If you could, excuse me, could you come to the podium? Yep. Name an address for the record, sir. Sorry, we don't usually have a big crowd, so I'm not using the questions from the audience.
You just have to stand up and ask a question.
We don't recognize you without a golf club.
George McGoldrick from Black Rock Development. The business is located at 19 Clubhouse Drive in Hingham, Massachusetts. I have a quick question. Some developments that happened last week by an abutter to the north at 70 Ward Street. And my question is that if that 135-foot extension to the north becomes another 10 or 15 feet, do we have to go through this whole process again, or can we make it part of this application? So that number 70 filed a lawsuit against the town and against me aggrieved with the variances, saying that he has no remedy. And the obvious remedy is to hook him up to water. So we haven't -- this just literally happened last Friday, I think. So we haven't spoken with their counsel yet, but I would offer to remedy it, to get rid of it, so I can move forward because I actually have a purchase and sale agreement with a local builder who's going to do three very nice homes on the six acres and give four acres back to conservation. And this is now stopping everything. So my question is if we have to go another 15, 20, 25 feet to extend to the next house over. So we're going 135 feet, correct? I think up north. If we have to go another 15, 20 feet, whatever the requirements of Aquarian are, do we have to go back through this process, or could I make it part of this?
So I did talk to Susan Murphy, real estate counsel, this afternoon about if there was a potential change to this. I wasn't sure. I didn't know about that. But if there was any other changes to this, could we do it on the fly? And she suggested that the Board of Selectmen, because this was a posted meeting and the abutters got what they got, you can only act on what's before you.
That was sort of my reaction.
Okay. I don't mean we can't work, Mr. McGoldrick, during the coming week or time.
I've got another -- if you could still stay at the podium. I'm not letting you off that easy. So if --
It's been 20 years, Mr. Fisher, since I stood at this podium.
So if this proposed work, the additional work that you're talking about, would there be any additional abutters who would be affected? In other words, did the notice that went out to current abutters, is that sufficient to cover any new abutters who might arise as a result of this work?
Abutters are -- are they 300 feet in this situation? For what -- I don't know what the water department is. So for example, was Dave Margatz, was he noticed? Because he is the only other house in that section before you get to Paul Warrie's house, which is probably 300 feet away, further away.
I don't have the buffer analysis to show if the --
Does anybody know? Because again, I know when you do a project that's 300 feet of abutters, I don't know if the water line is the same. Steve, I don't know if you know the answer to that.
You have to ask the assessor. She prepared the --
I don't know if it's just direct abutters or somebody within 300 feet.
The assessor's looking a little nervous in the front row. You know, I think there's, to me, there's two concepts here. One is the abutter list, but it's also kind of this, almost like a town meeting concept of within the scope. So to Susan's point, the abutters got notice of this, and the question would be, as you raise it, if we added whatever it is, you know, immaterial footage to one end of the project, is that within the scope of what's before us and within the scope of what the abutters have been notified for?
Which is why I would say, that's why I was saying, that I think during this interim period between now and potentially our next meeting, if necessary, I could talk to counsel, and we could evaluate that question.
Okay. So let's just make sure that we all understand, though, what the time delay could be. So when we have to give an abutter's notice, is it 30 days?
I believe it is.
No, it's less than 30. No, it's two weeks.
14 days?
14.
It's two weeks.
14 days, okay.
Do we have the copy of the notice that was sent to the abutters?
We usually do.
Should be in here.
Yeah. The notice of the hearing.
Is there a list of them?
Yeah.
Is it David Margatz or what's the address?
I just have the addresses. What do you know his address?
David, the 70 is across the street, so probably, you know, 58 is 70-ish, or odd number.
So 70 Ward Street was noticed?
That's the abutter next door that --
Is --
That's aggrieved because he doesn't, because of the well. Because he doesn't really want.
Okay.
So probably it'd be an odd number across the street. 87?
87's been noticed.
You call Dave and ask him, but you can do white pages, too.
So the notice is pretty specific about the project.
Yep. I'll give you my take, which is that --
70, I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher, 77.
He got notice.
So in my view is that if all abutters who are required to receive notice, receive notice, and they got notice of this proposed project, there is no requirement that this board approve the project as presented. We are entitled to make amendments, modifications. We could make restrictions. And if part of the modification is what's being proposed, I think it would be within the scope of the notice as long as there's no additional abutters who are otherwise entitled to receive notice.
So I would, I mean, I agree with you that we're entitled to make changes, but I think the sort of governing mandate is within the scope.
Yep.
And so the question, I think, for us is, is this within the scope?
Yep.
Tell me again, how much, do you have some sense of this, Steve? Like how?
Unfortunately, house number 70 is not on the sketch, but this sketch is to scale. But I don't have a --
It's a bit well. It's literally, it's on the property line, so it's right there. So it's --
It's about 50 or between 50 and 80 feet.
Yeah, that's 75, yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Possibly 75 feet, plus or minus. There's no abutter to number 70. That's owned by Riverstone or Red Gate, I think is the name. And then between 77 across the street and Mr. Warrie's house, there's a couple hundred-foot marsh.
Yep.
Steve, are you going to get to this in the next two weeks?
I have to ask the developer and his contractor.
We're aligned. Yes, we're teed up to do it because of the potential restrictions by the town in terms of when you can open the street.
Right, right.
For the winter use.
Yep.
But also, there is a well in existing home that the Board of Health made a big issue about because they're only 20 feet from their own septic. So they're well, and their septic is 20 feet away.
Yeah.
That's an existing house.
Existing, non-conforming, yep.
Happens to be an abutter to us, so we agreed to do that.
Right.
So the Board of Health was looking to get that done, so.
So would Riverstone, though, be an abutter, then? The owners?
They are through number 70. They own number 70.
Okay.
That's the house we're talking about.
Yep.
So if you're looking at your home of witness, there's a house, there's one house to the left, that's number 70. It's occupied by an employee of the company that owns the LLC.
Yep.
He should not be named. And I think that's part of the whole approved Riverstone project, which is one of the things frivolous.
Has Riverstone, has the LLC itself received? Are they one of these off Ward Street addresses?
They're number 70, correct.
Okay, but there's a resident living there, so I'm assuming that the notice went to that individual as an individual. I'm concerned about --
It's the homeowner, it's not their, so if there's a tenant, it's the homeowner that gets the --
Okay, so you're saying that it's a rental?
Correct. Well, I don't know what his deal is with his employee, but Riverstone owns that house. They're where they got noticed. They're the ones that filed the lawsuits, yes, so.
My --
Did I mention that?
Yes, you did. So my take on this is that at a minimum, there's a question about this, and I don't think it would be in anyone's interest to create yet another item for someone to appeal and challenge. So that perhaps we could consider moving forward with this, and then if we need to do a second notice that would provide for additional work, we can go through that procedure. But that wouldn't stop this stage from starting. Would that seem like a --
Except that if we're all there doing it. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I --
Whatever, that's fine.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm in agreement with that. I just, I think, you know, my nature would be to try to be as accommodating as I can be. But I, to Joe's point, I'm just, I just don't want to create any uncertainty and any, you know, possibility for --
I was just trying to solve the problem.
Yeah, I don't know, and I --
For myself and for you guys.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other comments?
Any other comments from the meeting, public? Okay.
So either we're going to vote to approve this, and then there may be a second vote for an extension, or we hold off and do the whole thing. Do you have, Tom, a recommendation on?
I would say at a bare minimum, take this vote. And if you want to take a vote contingent on some maybe Susan's approval or something, I would recommend you not do that, but that's, the board's prerogative.
I would just assume, take up the vote that's been presented and posted and move to consider any amendment or addition. Mr. McGoldrick, another question?
When do you meet that?
The 19th.
The 19th, November 19th.
Okay.
All right.
So I move that we approve the request of Aquarian to install and maintain two eight-inch ductile iron water main extensions on Ward Street at the locations of 90 Ward Street and 100 Ward Street. The first water main extension will originate in front of 90 Ward Street and connecting to the existing eight-inch ductile, am I pronouncing that right, ductile?
Sounds good to me.
Iron water main at 95 Ward Street. The water main will continue for approximately 135 feet under the paved surface of Ward Street to completion at approximately 70 Ward Street. This new main extension project will serve three new residential homes proposed for 90 Ward Street. In addition, as part of the project, the request includes installing and maintaining approximately 80 feet of eight-inch ductile iron water main extension in Ward Street. The main extension will originate at the intersection of Old Ward Street and 95 Ward Street and continue under the paved surface of Ward Street to completion at approximately 100 Ward Street. This new main extension project will provide a new water service to the residents at 100 Ward Street, which is currently serviced by private well. This approval will be subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated October 24, 2019, from the Department of Public Works.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Okay. Who knew the assessors were going to be on the hot seat tonight?
What a coincidence, I know.
So we have our annual, annual tax classification consideration. So maybe just, you know, for the folks at home, maybe take us through a little bit of the history on this and why we consider it and --
I'm Rick Nolan, I'm the Director of Assessing, and Erin Wallace is our Assistant Assessor, and she's going to put on a presentation today.
So the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes per Mass General Law 40-56. This doesn't change the total levy of the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class, residential versus commercial and industrial. There was a special committee formed a few years back to analyze and review the benefits and risks with adopting a split rate, and the committee recommended at that time that the percentage of residential and commercial would need to change dramatically to consider a split rate. At that time, Hingham had approximately 11.3% commercial and industrial properties, and for fiscal 2020, the percentage is 11%. So we looked at some projected estimated effects on property taxes by shifting the rate to commercial and industrial based on an $800,000 assessment and our current tax rate of $11.81. So a shift of 10% would decrease the average residential taxes by about $114 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by about $2,330. A 25% shift would decrease residential taxes by about $292 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by about $5,850. So we've had a few local business owners that have expressed their gratitude towards the town for keeping the same tax rate. Most of the businesses, especially downtown, are smaller stores and may have difficulty paying a higher tax rate. Many of the local businesses in town contribute generously to our students by donating to their various fundraising, which benefits a lot of sports and theater products in town. So on October 29th of this year, the Board of Assessors met, and they discussed and reviewed the classification issue and options, and a motion was made, and the vote was unanimous to recommend that the Board of Selectmen leave the tax rate as a single rate for fiscal year 2020.
Great. Questions?
I concur with that assessment. As both the residential and commercial.
Yeah, no, and I, you know, I appreciate you taking us through it. I think it demonstrates, the numbers demonstrate the significant tax burden that would be borne by our commercial class of taxpayers. And, you know, I think to your point, Erin, you know, this board has been very protective of the commercial base that we have, particularly the commercial base in and around the square, because as you suggest, they're smaller, smaller business operations, and they're, I think, vital to the, you know, vitality of the town and the vibrancy of the square. And, you know, I also think that you highlighted what we all rely on. I thought, I think I see Lynn Barclay in the back. You know, we have good partners, I think, in a number of the businesses that operate in this town. And so, yeah, okay, they're not paying a higher tax rate, but they do pitch in when asked, and, you know, that doesn't go unnoticed by us. So I just, like Joe, it just doesn't make any, I think, fiscal sense to drive our, what's a limited commercial tax base, you know, out of town. And if you tuned in or were here a week, last week, Mary Power made a presentation on the effect of various projects on our tax rate, and in her analysis, she described the commercial base in other communities that, you know, are able to sort of share in the burden that otherwise is borne fully by our residents. But we are where we are with our commercial tax base, and so this makes, this makes good sense.
Let me ask for the commercial buildings in downtown where often there's a apartment on the second floor and then a business on the first floor. Are they classified as commercial?
They're mixed use.
Yes.
They're either considered primary residential or commercial, depending on the percentage.
Right. So if it's mostly business and there's one apartment, then it's --
Be commercial.
It'd be commercial. And so in that case, the tenant in those apartments would really bear a significant increase if in fact the --
Same with the small restaurants, a lot of them are tenant-occupied, so they would pay higher rents to pay for the higher taxes.
Great. Any questions from the public on the tax classification this evening? Marco? Sorry, I got to ask you to, that could be a dissuader to come up to the --
Marco, board 33 Elm Street. A silly question, but this comes up every year, it seems like, right? As a small business owner myself, who happens to be downtown these days, it would be much better if you could have some kind of amendment that said, "We'll lock it in for five years" so you could plan.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
That's not possible?
I think this is part of the --
The state requires it every year.
So, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. What if we could? Any other questions? All right. Any further comments?
If you, there was a motion, if you could make that.
We will.
So I move that the residential factor be set at one. I believe that's the official motion that you need.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sue Nickerson. Sue loves this time of year, not only --
It's Tom Mayers. I'm just here to support.
So this is our, the first time we will be reviewing the forecast, which is the start of our budget season here at Town Hall, which gets very busy. Department heads are busy preparing budgets that we'll ultimately hear. And the starting point for what do we have to spend is part of the forecast report, is a group that actually meets, you know, kind of slowly in the beginning, but probably monthly, sometimes weekly, depending on how the financial picture's coming together. That consists of folks here at Town Hall, Board of Selectmen, and School Committee to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to what the revenue projections are for the town. And so with no further ado, Tom and --
I actually do have one more ado, which is, just so people in the public understand, listed on the agenda, it says, "Forecast update," and I received the agenda. I thought we were going to discuss if we're going to be getting snow this weekend, but that's not the forecast. This is the financial forecast. So go ahead.
This is the financial, we'll change that. So noted, next time.
Revenue.
All right. So as Sue just mentioned, this is really a revenue forecast. This is a document that helps us understand what we anticipate our annual revenue to look like this year. It's in large part driven by the tax rate, as you can imagine, and that is formed by what we saw last year, or in FY '20, the year we're in currently. The tax levy is anticipated to come in at around $82.7 million with anticipated 2.5% growth over that of just over $2 million, $2,700,000. New growth is looking like 1.3 million. Spoke recently with Rick Nolan, our assessor, who was very confident in that number. That's looking, that's looking good. Our debt exclusion, the schedule is looking like $3.4 million for a total annual tax levy of $89.5 million for FY '21. We have some unknowns as we go through these, this very early stage of the revenue forecast process, and that, the biggest unknown I think we have is state aid. We are projecting the number that we received last year of a little over $11.3 million. We won't know that number for sure until early in, early next year. We'll get a, we'll get a pretty good picture of it earlier in the month in January, but we won't know for sure until later. The local receipts are looking, again, looking like a minor increase from last year, about $10.35 million. And then we have a bunch of enterprise funds that balance off with the expenses, the Country Club, the Sewer. We get a $500,000 annual light plant payment in lieu of taxes. The meals tax reserves this year are anticipated at $0 as that has, as that program has ended. The stabilization fund, we're looking at still perpetuating the $178,000 allotment over several years to bring a total other revenue to $27.7 million for a total sources of $117,269,000. That's the anticipated revenue. If you have any questions, Sue and I are here to answer them.
Great. Joe?
If you could just make it clear to the public where the schools fit in here, particularly in terms of state aid, that's a big question.
Well, state aid is basically made up of school aid, lottery money, the school building assistance program, and other reimbursements, which are basically for veterans' benefits.
Yep. So the big question is what's going to happen with foster school? How does that impact what we're looking at?
So it doesn't, so this is, again, the revenue forecast.
Right, so I just want to, but state aid is part of this, so I just want to make sure that we're understanding.
The MSBA program you're talking about for foster?
Oh, definitely.
That's a pay-as-you-go. So they will pay the bills, and then MSBA will reimburse it. It will have nothing to do with this.
Okay.
And we won't hear from, about that program until December.
Got it. Okay.
Any further?
No.
I think I'm all set. I just want to make clear that although the Meals Tax Reserve, the stabilization fund the town meeting created years ago to capture some of the Meals Tax money in order to offset the excluded debt amounts at the middle school, that's tapering off, coextensive with the debt on the middle school. I don't want you to think for a minute that there's no Meals Tax revenue.
No, no, sorry.
You know, restaurants here are a robust part of our, of our tax base, and in addition to real estate taxes that we just heard about, every time you're going out to eat and others are coming into town to go out to eat, you're contributing to our local receipts. So the Meals Tax revenue now falls into the local receipts line item. Questions for the public on the revenue, financial revenue forecast? No other questions? Okay. So, you know, this, the forecasting for, I see Laura's in the room, Bill Riordan's in the room, for folks that have been kind of around the block on this, it's a little bit of an art and a science in following the forecast and coming together on a budget. And we really depend on Tom and Michelle, and we also depend heavily on my colleague Mary. depend on Tom and Michelle. And we also depend heavily on my colleague Mary, who's not here this evening. I just want to say Mary's not feeling well, and that's the only reason she's not here. So I'm sure she's tuning in. We're thinking of you, and we hope you feel better. Okay.
You're welcome.
Next is the CPC application vision for Hingham's Inner Harbor. We've heard from, you may recall, we've heard from a couple other applicants where the Board of Selectmen is the, kind of the legal owner of the parcel in question. And so CPC requires in order for an application to move forward, that the, that the entity that controls the, the parcel in question actually provide its permission for a project to move forward. So tonight, the vote tonight on the CPC application is really a procedural vote by the board, just allowing the Harbor Development Committee to advance a proposal to undertake master planning efforts in concert with the trustees of the Bathing Beach down at the harbor. So, Joe, any questions or comments on this?
Just following up on the chair's comment, that this board sits in two capacities. One capacity, we are the owner of property. And the second capacity is we make policy. And so the vote tonight is only as the owner of the property, allowing this project to move forward with respect to CPC. It's not a vote with respect to policy.
And it's not a vote on the merits?
Right.
To that end. It's not a vote on the merits of the proposal. So that, that comes back around. I think we, we do try to be careful about that, because as the owner, we don't, we need the CPC committee to do its good work in vetting the proposals and in making the tough choices about the projects to advance. So, so we say good luck to the Harbor Development Committee. Any, and the Bathing Beach trustees. Absolutely. Any questions or comments from the public with respect to the CPC application by the Harbor Development Committee?
Then I move that the board allow the Harbor Development Committee and trustees of the Bathing Beach to submit an application for community preservation funding for Hingham's Inner Harbor.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. And as I said, good luck. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for your good work.
Okay. Item number seven is potential climate change initiative and the Energy Action Committee. And my apologies, I'd hoped to get to this sooner in the year, but we're here tonight, and I'm, I'm happy to, to ask the board to move forward to enlist the expertise of the Energy Action Committee to create a proposal and a structure for us to consider with respect to planning for carbon neutrality for the, for the town of Hingham. And the town of Hingham in the broader sense, the community of Hingham. I know that Brad Moyer and Laura Burns are here this evening, and they're probably better able to kind of take you through what this initiative could and should look like. So maybe before we get going, if you, you'd like to come to the podium and, or come to the table and take us through. Thank you.
Brad Moyer, 23 Colonial Road, Head Chair of the Energy Action Committee. Thank you for having me here this evening and considering our proposal. At a public meeting in September, the Energy Action Committee voted to put the following proposal before the Selectmen. It is a four-part proposal. One is the committee would offer to be a public forum to help develop goals for what could become a Hingham Climate Action Plan. The, two, the committee would seek Selectmen agreement and direction on the EAC being the public forum for such goal development. Three, the committee would propose a subcommittee of committee members and citizen volunteers and/or Selectmen appointees to work on the goal development. And four, upon development of goals, the committee and Selectmen would propose a warrant article at town meeting on pursuing a climate action plan in accordance with the goals. So that is the proposal, and why we are here with that proposal before you this evening, is effectively twofold. One is the Energy Action Committee, historically its charter has been for municipal energy efficiency measures, which is something we've pursued for the better part of a decade. But we understand that municipal use is but a small part of the town's overall usage. In, in other towns that have benchmarked, you'll find that 80% plus of energy use in the town is residential, and the rest consisting of businesses and municipalities. So we would like to consider expanding the mandate to pursue action on behalf of the entire town. The second is that though we are a town chartered committee, so created by town meeting vote, and therefore are able to pursue these goals independently, we well know that our work is best done in partnership. And we think for something of this import, that it would be better served to have direction from the town as a whole. So we think a partnership with the Selectmen in this regard would go much farther towards providing support for pursuing the conversations that we'd like to have with the town. And as you can tell from the proposal, this is largely a broad conversation we would like to have with the community, to bring it to town meeting, to get direction on, on where to go further as in the development of such, such a plan, so what those goals would be. And so we feel with the Selectmen on board with this, with our committee on board, and many dedicated citizen volunteers that we have with us in the audience tonight and viewing as well, that we can really move this forward in a way that would benefit Hingham greatly. So with that, I'm certainly happy to take any questions or welcome anyone else to speak at this time.
Do you have any questions for Brad at the moment?
No.
Just, yes, sir. Yeah, sorry.
So Bruce Macaloney, Six Black Rock. So I, I'm confused on climate change. It affects a lot of different portions. It's not just carbon neutral. I'm a member of the Harbor Development Committee.
Mm-hmm.
And it encompasses sea rise. We're doing work on the wharves to increase the height to prevent the overflow of water. We're also conducting meetings, or attending meetings with the state on their initiative to come in and put a barrier across the, the Boston Harbor to prevent tides from coming in because of sea level rise. So the question comes in, you know, the Energy Action Committee, how does that fit into that? And could you please post your minutes? You haven't posted minutes in a while on the website.
Yeah, I'll address the latter first. That was actually
Those two questions.
So that actually has to kind of come through me and then go to you.
Oh, sorry.
Just to be, just to be clear about that. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So let me just, before Brad jumps in, you know, I, as you point out, Mr. Macaloney, climate change is multifaceted, right? And this was one of the areas where I think we didn't feel like we had any coverage, that nobody was thinking broadly about this question. And, you know, we'll, we'll get to this as the meeting moves on, but I think one of the ideas about partnering with the Energy Action Committee was to get their reaction and to get their kind of census-taking of the climate change efforts that are going on around town. So one, one of the directions that we have anticipated, I think, in our vote is, and one of the things I'm hoping the Energy Action Committee would undertake, is sort of casting a broad net to think about how climate change and carbon neutrality is being impacted and affected by other initiatives across the municipality, and to kind of synthesize those, those elements and bring it together in a, in a climate change, carbon neutrality plan. So I, I don't, I don't see this as being, to me, I think it's a, it's a wider net that then gets synthesized and comes back to the board Selectmen. But Brad, go ahead.
No, no, I think that's absolutely right. I mean, and part of this effort is going to be to decide what goes into such a plan. Towns will approach it differently, and others have. So you can look at it purely from a carbon neutrality standpoint. Are you going to reduce your CO2 emissions to a date fixed at a date in the future? So international accords right now targeted 2050. They may be moving that up, because that might not be sufficient, but it's taking a zero approach from one date, saying by that date, we will make sure that we have no additional carbon beyond, say, 2010. Just throwing out a number. So you could look at it narrowly in that regard. But you're absolutely right. Climate change, sea level rise is a big component of that. And for Hingham, a coastal community, it's a very big concern. So there are other programs and ways of approaching that, the municipal vulnerability program that the state runs, to which Hingham has already developed a plan, is one component of that. And there's additional funding available. Whether we would consider that as something as part of this plan, or whether that's done separately, is part of the discussion. But I agree with the chair that that is something we would bring all together in this conversation and see what, what comes out of it, what direction the town wants to go in at the end.
Further questions or comments with respect to this question? Laura?
Laura Burns, 479 Main Street. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider this proposal. We have some members of Hingham Net Zero here in the group, in the room. Could you just stick your hand up? We're just a group of citizens who've been meeting to talk about what to do about the cause of climate change. Here in Hingham, we have done some work on adaptation. We did our Kleinfelder study that I'm sure the Harbor Development Committee relies on a lot in terms of figuring out what to do around the harbor because of sea, of sea level rise. But we have not really yet addressed the cause of rising sea level. And that's the piece that Chairman Johnson said was missing. So we just want to say that we support strongly the proposal that the Energy Action Committee's put forward, and we hope to participate in the process. In the early stages, we're hoping that we can help the committee do their research, because there's a lot of research to be done. There's some best practices out there that we can look up all across the country, but we'd like to help with that. And then later, whatever the proposal is, we hope to be part of socializing those ideas in the community and helping the committee get feedback from the broader community. So thank you very much for taking the time to address climate change.
Thank you. Anybody else? Joe, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is an incredible opportunity for the town. And there are other communities across the country which view this more as a national issue, which it is, but that, that it's so overwhelming that it's difficult for communities to take a stand and move forward. And this is an indication that we are taking individual responsibility for making a difference. And it's just incredible that Hingham's willing to, to step up to do that. So thank you for, for leading the charge.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Joe. I mean, I think the, the breadth of the analysis that really needs to take place to create a document and a plan that will work for Hingham, you know, I, you've shared with me, Laura's shared with me, some plans that other communities have put together. They're comprehensive. I think they're data-driven. And the question is can we build from some of that work, in addition to some of our own work, to come up with a, you know, a, a plan and a path toward carbon neutrality? So, you know, we appreciate the work of the volunteers, as well as the work of the Energy Action Committee, and your willingness, frankly, to, to Joe's point, to take on, I think, a very big task. So, yes, ma'am? Sorry. We should maybe add like a microphone over there, so people don't have to watch so far, but I appreciate it. Name, name an address for the record.
Laura Freeman, 269 High Street. I just wanted to thank you very much for putting this on the agenda. Critical item, and thank Brad and the Energy Committee for putting together the great proposal, Hingham Net Zero folks. I just think this is really important. I, I did want to just add that there are other towns that have already gone fairly far along with this, such as Concord. And that perhaps, particularly since it's really an urgent issue, that we want to make sure that we're, you know, we don't reinvent the wheel. We could get a lot of great advice from them and see the process they went through, maybe use some of their data, et cetera. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I noticed that they have a sustainability, I mean, after they put their climate action plan together, I'm referring to the town of Concord, they have now a Sustainability Director. It's a position in the town, as well as a Climate Action Board, just as if, like you have Conservation Board, there's a Climate Action Advisory Board. So these are just ideas out there. This is how much can be done in this, but their basic two points are to produce, obviously, there's the energy efficiency component, and then also reducing emissions. And it, and that could be in the transportation sector, as well as municipal and buildings. And I think Hingham is a unique town that should be a leader in this field, because we have such incredible professionals and volunteers in this town. It's exactly the type of thing that we could really hit the ground running, and it is a local issue as much as anything else, particularly when national level, we're unfortunately not getting leadership. Anyway, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments. Anything further?
If I could just address that. Great idea. And in fact, we've already been in contact with Belmont, Reading, Concord, and Dedham, who have been leaders in this area. The first three towns, because they're all muni-like towns, so very similar to Hingham in that regards. And Dedham, because they've been a leader in many environmental and sustainability measures for well over a decade now. So definitely have a lot of learnings from them and hope to get more as well.
And Brad, I mean, I, you know, we're also in the midst of implementing, and maybe Michelle can comment on this as well, the, the Green Communities Program that you, you know, brought forward, you with the Energy Action Committee brought forward, brought to the Board of Selectmen. We adopted that. We are, we received grant.
We received grant funding, which Brad and the Energy Actually, Energy Action Committee helped us put together that application. And we're moving forward this year with four projects, three in the schools, one at a sewer pumping station to help reduce our, or begin to reduce our municipal energy use over the next five years by 20%. So the Green Communities is helping with the municipal side, and I know that this is meant to help with the rest of, of the town.
Right. Okay. All right. Anything further? Have we take a motion?
No motion. And even though I have not discussed this with Mary, I suspect she would be very much on board with pursuing this. I, I know that carbon neutrality and the issues that we're addressing have, are important to her. So I think we're acting in, in, in line with her spirit if we move forward with this. So I would make a motion to request that the Energy Action Committee create a process and a structure by which the town of Hingham can evaluate a path to achieving carbon neutrality and to report these findings to the Board of Selectmen.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
[laughing]
Glad to be here.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, well, thank you for being here, everybody. That was great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks, Paul. Good to see you. All right. Hopefully you guys are leaving to get to work, right? Okay, so quickly, the, the Town Hall Study Committee, last week, it seems like it was longer ago than last week.
I know, right?
Last week, we talked about the need to think through potentially shorter-term, smaller capital project fixes, to breathe a little life into Town Hall and to alleviate, I think, some of the working and volunteer concerns that the facility presents for people on a daily basis, including parking. So we, we, it's all about them, I guess. We we talked with the folks who are currently serving on the Town Hall Study Committee, just to make sure we weren't signing them up for something they weren't willing to undertake. And in the meantime, also talked about framing a charge for them, because their charge is, was somewhat different than we're asking them to do now. So unless there are questions on that, I think, to Joe's point, Tom's been able to talk to all three of us about moving forward with this effort. And this is sort of the, the formal step we need to take to get the Town Hall Study Committee to begin to work on this. Any questions, Joe, or any comments?
No. Do we have anyone in the audience who wants to?
No questions.
Nothing? I mean, you above anybody might have some, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Has been consulted.
This is my arm-wrestling competitor here. So, came in for a challenge, I assume.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Just because Joe's the boss.
He's training me. That's okay. So
Would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to request that the Town Hall Study Committee, working under the direction of the town administrator, identify and make recommendations with respect to parking and small-scale capital improvement projects for Town Hall as currently constituted, and to report these findings to the Board of Selectmen. We further request that this work be completed by mid-January 2020 and include up-to-date cost estimates.
This is the, we got another charge on the table. So this one, we talked about again like last week, I feel like. We talked about as part of our goals and objectives, which by the way, the Energy Action Charge as well as the Town Hall Study Committee Charge, I think, was part of some of those discussions as well. So the naming bylaw, you may recall, we have a naming bylaw that really speaks to the naming of municipal buildings and lands and doesn't contemplate what happens if we get significant private philanthropic support that would help us in the construction or augmentation of those facilities. And so the question becomes, you know, in environment like this, it'd be nice to celebrate and recognize those people who are willing to step up beyond their tax bill and support municipal projects. And so what this charge would do is ask, we'd like to bring together a relatively small group of people to take a look at what other towns are doing, to take a look at current trends in fundraising, and to present to us potential changes to the naming bylaw that would accommodate recognition of private philanthropic support. So that's. Anything to add?
I will say I am a skeptic of this, of moving forward with this. I think it opens up an issue, naming issues in other towns that I've seen, it focuses on three things: exceptional individuals, historic events, and major donations. And I think all three topics will likely be on the table if we go down this road. I think it's, it will be a time-consuming process, and I'm not sure this is, this is the time we want to be opening it up. And for a town that's as historic as Hingham is, to be sending a signal that, you know, certain naming rights are up for grabs may disturb members of the public, at least some members of the public. I recognize the need for revenue, and I would rather see us be focusing on revenue sources and see whether or not this is high on the list that we should be pursuing, rather than saying, this is high on the list, now let's figure out how to, the best way to implement it. I think it has worked for other towns. I think for other towns and places across the country, it hasn't worked, and I'm concerned about going down this road. But that doesn't mean that, you know, if the Chair wants to proceed with further review, I would certainly be open to that, but I'm concerned.
No, and I, you know, I think Mary expressed that concern last week as well. I mean, I think that the genesis of the naming bylaw, you know, came at a period of time for the town that was emotional, and, you know, and so there's, I think, part of me too that thinks, so why would you, why would you want to open this up? And I think in part, I do feel like this is a good time to do it because we have on the horizon two significant projects on town-owned property where we've essentially instructed people to go out and raise money to support, private money to support municipal projects. And I think that, you know, I guess I don't look at it like it's up for sale. I look at it like if someone's willing to step forward and make a significant contribution, it's a way to say thank you, and it's a way to provide recognition. So, you know, I think it's consistent with, you know, I think it's consistent with where the, where the world of philanthropy is going, and I think that, again, when I spoke with members of the original naming bylaw committee, it wasn't, it just wasn't as much of a thing then as it is now. And we talk all the time in here about public-private partnerships, and if you, I think that, I think if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to endeavor to have those fulsome private partnerships, I don't think we can go at that without all the tools in our tool bag. And so one question is, you know, is, is the ability to recognize and say thank you to people who are willing to step up in a significant way for projects that would otherwise either not occur or would be paid for out of our tax levy, you know, ought we be able to recognize them?
Is that something that we should be looking at on a case-by-case basis? So if someone comes to us and they're going to contribute $10 million or something, that, in my view, may be a one-off situation. That may be easier to, and to come up with a solution rather than going through an extensive process, which is going to consider smaller projects, larger products, projects, where do we draw the line in terms of dollars, which I don't know how that's going to be done in an abstract situation. There are towns that have given naming rights for sewer connections and for little sewer, I mean, I don't think we're going there.
No, I don't think we're going there.
But, but we, if we're redoing the bylaw, we need to anticipate what the range of projects would be. I think if there's a public-private opportunity that we can identify or that some, someone comes forward and identifies it to us, we work on that, and then we would present that specific project, rather than trying to really go through a comprehensive analysis, because I think it will not be limited just to the private-public partnership. It would be, well, if we're going to do naming rights, what are the other conditions that would be appropriate? No, no funds coming in, but there's an historic reason, or there may be some other reason that we want to recognize. I think that's likely to be part of the conversation.
Well, that's not what the charge is. That's not what the charge says, number one. Number two, I think that part of this is anticipatory, right? So these, these, you know, I think when someone comes, when you're approaching someone to say, you know, we'd like you to contribute to the bubble at the country club, so that's one of the projects that's on the table. You know, I feel like to then have to back up and go through a significant sort of what-if process kind of creates uncertainty around, like, am I going to recognize you or am I not going to recognize you? And so I think, I think that there may be situations where this group might come back and say, look, some of this is a little bit of a work in progress, and so we might, we might defer to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, let's say. Or we might defer to the discretion of the school committee. But I think, again, I think the current bylaw is silent on this particular aspect of whether, frankly, it's appropriate or not. The committee could come back, to your point, and say, look, you know, we think it's just too, too complex to capture in a bylaw. You know, many towns don't have, frankly, any codification of naming rights, and it is sort of ad hoc and at the discretion of the property owner that we talked about before. But I think that, again, we've, we've asked people to go out and raise money on our behalf. I have heard from, you know, both of those groups to suggest that this is a hurdle. And so if I'm, if I'm in a situation where I'm asking them to bring in resources to the town, and they're telling me they feel hampered by not even being able to consider this, then I feel like it's worth asking the question. And in terms of, you know, time, I think this is a small group that's going to do its work and come back to us, so I don't see this as being a significant drag on our resources.
I think that if it's a small group, my concern, I have a concern that it didn't in fact represent and hear from the members of the community, who really may have divergent viewpoints. And I think the uncertainty is, I understand it, you know, from the potential donor's side, there's uncertainty if this can be done. The uncertainty now is being thrust back onto the town. Well, so if the contribution is $30,000, would we accept it? Is it $50,000, would we accept it? So how do we, how, why is it appropriate for the town to be considering all those hypothetical situations in advance? Because what I'm suggesting-
I don't think it needs, I guess, I don't think it needs to be that, necessarily that specific, Joe. And I think that, you know, if, if you don't want to vote for this, let's wait until Mary's back. Because I think this, you know, I have done a lot of homework on this. I have talked to a former member of the prior naming bylaw committee. I have talked to folks that are trying to raise money for the Maritime Center and for the swimming pool. And I am being, you know, told that this is an impediment to their success. And so I'm, I, I don't see anything wrong with asking the question, and if you're not ready to move forward, I suggest we move on.
It's difficult to say that there's a problem asking the question. I'm concerned about where it's going to lead. And, you know, I've not had those discussions that you've had with the other folks. I would be surprised if what came out of any review would be that those projects would be approved without some sort of review, either by the Selectmen or by town meeting. And so that, the level of uncertainty as to whether or not it be approved, that level of uncertainty would continue. So it's just not clear to me how this would clear that up.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we know that. So again, I, you know, I think without kind of understanding what the parameters are and understanding what other communities do and understanding what our appetite is for recognition, you know, as it stands now, any, any, any sort of major project like this would need to go before town meeting. And I think having lived through the naming discussion around the East School, I don't think that that is the right forum to potentially recognize somebody who's made a major contribution to the municipality. I think it just, it, it's divisive, potentially divisive, and it's, it's, I think, not in keeping with our culture. So I, you know, my sense would be, let's see if we can come up with some parameters that seem to make sense and that help us recognize people who are willing to make contributions to the town. And again, like I, I think I've said that 10 times now, so if you're not willing to move on, I suggest we may wait for Mary, and we have another discussion about it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Appointments. So I have a couple. I'd like to move to appoint Amy Farrell to the Affordable Housing Trust to fill, fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Megan Ward to the Cultural Council to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I move that we appoint Catherine Daly as the Historical Society Representative to the Historic Districts Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I move that we appoint Carol Piles as the At-Large Member to the Historic Districts Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I move that we appoint Carol Piles as the At-Large Member to the Historic Districts Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We've got a couple votes. Do you want to, any comments on the streetlight? I talked to, I talked to Tom and Michelle about it and got some information from the light plant, so I'm, I'm good to move on that one.
Yeah, yeah. The, the cost of the, of the light to put in was $175 or so. That's about $15 a year to run the LED streetlight, and that gets added into our streetlight bill that we get, a global bill from the, from HMLP that's paid out of, out of an account within the accounting department.
Great.
So I move to approve the installation of a 38-watt LED streetlight on pole number 10 at 36 Simmons Road.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the change order I've talked with Susan Murphy about, so change order with respect to the 3A improvement project, the contract with Design Consultants, Inc. Any, any comments, Tom or Michelle, on this?
No, this is the, this is the consultant that's, like you said, that's helping us build the, we're at the 25% plan mark now for the 3A corridor. We need to get to the 75% plan by a certain date, and they're helping us with this process with the NPO.
Yep.
And I've reviewed it with Susan as well. So I move that the Board approve and execute a change order to original agreement with Design Consultants, Inc., in connection with the Route 3A improvement project.
Second. All is in favor? Aye. Okay, so this is the, the town building permit. Do you want to just introduce the topic so people know what's going on?
Sure. This is step one in making me Lord and King.
Good luck.
Good luck with that. Yeah, right. No, thank you, never mind.
Not getting a pay raise for that, you realize.
So we often are requested to waive, we, the Board of Selectmen is often requested to waive the building permit fees, electrical fees, plumbing fees, et cetera, for town building projects by the departments that, that are engaging in those efforts. And it's often, it's very ministerial. It's often, if we end up in a period of time where we're meeting every two weeks or perhaps even every three weeks, it can, it can be a hindrance to, to a project that's, that's moving. I would, I'm asking here that you empower me to make those decisions when we should be waiving building permit fees for town projects. I mean, it's a pretty standard, it's a pretty standard process.
Yep. And so the, the thing I liked about this formulation of this concept was that from time to time, there are some questions that should be raised with respect to the waiver of the fees, and this at least puts you in a position to review together and decide whether there are any further questions that need to be asked before the fees are waived.
So for example, there was one where, in fact, there was a third party that was going to cover those fees, in which case we would not want to have them waived.
That's exactly right.
Yep. So.
Take a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016 hereby assign to the Town Administrator the authority to waive building, electrical, and plumbing permit fees for projects undertaken by the Town of Hingham located on property owned by the Town of Hingham. This assignment of authority to waive said fees shall remain in effect until a further vote of the Board of Selectmen to rescind said authority.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think we just have Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Michelle, nothing for me? Thank you. Tom?
So I just wanted to report out, to let the Board know that Michelle and I, along with several department heads and staff, attended an Emergency Operations Center training yesterday. It intended to prepare us as a town to, to protect the lives and welfare of the community in the event of unforeseen emergencies. This, it was in part put on by both the MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Association, as well as a certified trainer from the Taunton Police Department. It was very well done. We came out of it with a lot of, a lot of to-dos, where we've learned that we're well ahead of the curve in terms of preparedness in the state, which is always nice to hear, and not surprising given our, given our, the leadership in our, in our public safety departments. So it was a very good class.
Joe?
Nothing.
So a couple things. One, you heard earlier this evening, we had the first forecast meeting this week. It includes representatives from the school committee and staff of the school committee, including the superintendent, representatives of the town. I go as, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Tom and Sue, Michelle, and Victor Baltar from the Advisory Committee, as well as Bob Curley, who's the Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee this year. And so the, you know, the notion has been over the long haul that we all need to be on the same page with respect to what the revenue is. Tom reviewed, you know, what we see as the revenue forecast to date, but it's really important, it's, I think is an important component and important, important communication venue so that we can build trust over the long haul that this is the money that we have to spend and we need to live within those means. And then the second thing is we, we attended the Senior Center Open House, all three of us, was a public posted meeting, and I thought it was a really lively, great discussion. And we've encouraged members of the Senior Center and the Council on Aging to make sure that their voices are heard at part of the master planning, as part of the master planning process for the town, as well as with us. And I think that we will look forward to more regular communication with that group. I think that's it. Mary, I hope you feel better?
Yes.
Anything else? I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All is in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.